I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, thank you for this beautiful day you've given us and God, thank you for the rain that we got over the weekend. God, I just pray that you would be with us tonight as we meet here and discuss business for the school district. God, I pray that you'd help us to make wise decisions, decisions that are best for the kids and God that ultimately honor you. And God, I just pray that you would just be with the final few months of school here and God be with all the teachers and administration and as they finish up the year strong. And God, just pray that you would just once again bless this meeting tonight. God, we most of all thank you for your son, Jesus. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Welcome, everybody. All this April 8th, 2025, school board meeting to order. We do have a call.
All right. You've had an opportunity to look at the consent agenda. We have the agenda, the minutes from the last meeting and the last two disciplinary meetings. The enrollment report is right about where it's been. The district financial report. I feel good with where we're at. It's still a little early to know for sure where that's, how that's going to work out, but I feel good with where we're at right now. We've had a good year up to this point. Haven't had any curveballs that have come out of our way, so we feel good with where we're at on the finances. Any questions about the consent agenda? And I would recommend that we approve the consent agenda.
Can I get a motion? Motion by Nick Bonebaker?
All right. The next item we have is on the community eligibility provision. And so I've asked Jill to come in and speak to this for a few minutes. This is, we believe, going to be good news for our district and a good report. So Jill, I'll just turn it over to you.
Okay. Okay. So community eligibility provisions, CEP, we try to shoot for it every single year, at least in the last couple of years that I've been here. It's been unattainable. We've tried so hard to do it. That means every student eats free. So to get CEP and qualify, you have isolated student population, which is your Medicaid-free SNAP, migrant, foster, homeless. And the state requires us to have at least 25% to even be considered to do CEP. This is our numbers. Last year, as a district, we were 23.2%. And then I broke it down where you can see how each campus felt. Our elementaries, we barely made it last year. Our high schools didn't. So we felt, it's not really going to help us with not having to go to the community and ask for applications. So in October, our ISP was 17.99%. It looked like we weren't going to make it at all. This year, we have made it. 46.97% district-wide. The left side is each campus broke down at what their percentage was. That's great numbers. Like, completely just remarkable. So what does this mean? It means we qualify for CEP next year. First time that I know of that we've qualified. We would need board approval to elect to do CEP. The percentage of meals reimbursed at the federal free rate would be at 75.17%. The paid price would be 24.77%. And our reduced meals would basically go away. They would be rolled into free. We would be locked in at these rates for five years. If in five years, we're running into red or anything looks negative, we could go back out, ask the community to do applications again, see where we fall, and go from there. If we're still doing good and the district's like, we can do this for another five years, we can elect off that fifth year to continue on for at least five more years. So that's 10 years CEP, these rates. So breakfast and snack are already going to be free next year. So lunch is the only thing that we would have as a district to pay the deficit, which is the difference between the paid and the free price. And so we would be offering lunches, breakfast, and snack free to every student. This is an application process. So I haven't yet applied for CEP. This is purely informational. Lunch, breakfast hasn't changed to free yet. We have to get approval from the state and the board to do CEP. My deadlines for the state extending the offer for our school district to do CEP is the 30th of April, which would mean I would come to you guys in May to ask for your approval. To file my deadline is June 30th, to do it next year. One thing for the parents, if your child ends the school year with a negative balance and we are free next year, you will still get a negative balance letter from me until that balance is paid. So we haven't applied for anything yet. This is just for your information. And then I'll hand it over to Natasha for her financial slide.
All right. So if the school is responsible for roughly 25%, where is that money going to come from? And I just wanted to touch on this very briefly. So one of the portions of applying for CEP is looking at your ESA allocations each year. And so the last two years, we've made that 70% mark. And so that means we got double per student in our funding. And this allows us to lock in that 70, what is our number, 71.25 or something like that right now? That would, the CEP, if we apply for that and we get accepted, then that allows us to lock in that 71 and some change percent over these next five, possibly 10 years. And so we would not collect applications. We wouldn't have to worry about all of that. Our allocation would remain at that double amount per student. So our current allocation this year is about a little over $1.1 million. Now, we talked about this before, but when you reach that 70%, you don't get that full doubled amount that initial year. You get a third of it the first year, two-thirds, and the next year, we will get the full three-thirds. So we will get all of it next year. So our estimated allocation for next year is almost $1.5 million with that additional allocation. So this additional allocation could be used as a set aside for the school lunches that are not already reimbursed by the state, that 75% that they're going to reimburse. If all unreimbursed students ate lunch every single day, then we would need to cover $365,000, which is very doable with this increased amount. So none of our current programs would be impacted. It would not affect anything else that we're already covering with ESA funds. This would be in addition to. So this would be an added benefit for our students and our community. Any questions about?
So this means every student?
Every student would eat for free.
For free at Huntsville Campus and the St. Paul Campus?
Yes.
And the timeline threw me off a little bit. That is five years?
Yes.
And then did I hear you say there's an opportunity to roll it into an additional time?
Yes.
Wow.
So this does a lot of different things for us. It locks in that funding, so we don't have to worry about those applications because, as you guys know, we have fought tooth and nail to get those turned in so that we can qualify for that 70%. And we've been able to make that mark the last two years. And this would lock us in there for the next five, possibly 10, if our numbers are still looking good. And that locks in that funding as well.
Do we have to wait until next month to preserve?
Yes, unfortunately, because I have to get the state's approval first. They have to tell me, yes, your numbers are accurate. You didn't fib. You didn't lie. They say, okay, it's good to preserve. Yeah. And there is a process that Jill can talk more about. Like, they come and check all of our paperwork and everything for all of that to ensure that we do meet that qualification. So it is a lengthy process and a lot of paperwork that Jill's got to do on the child nutrition side, but.
There are very few things I've seen in 38 years much more impressive than the work you all did last year, all of you, to qualify as our students and make sure that we met our goal. And this will help alleviate some of that pressure?
Yes. Yes. The reason that we met that ISP number this year was because some changes that the state made in qualification. And so they're now accepting Medicaid students. So that's a conversation that we had, that we've always known the need was there, and it was just tooth and nail to scratch, you know, to get us to that point. But we knew that the need was there. You know, we visit with our families. We know our kids. So we're really thrilled that this is an option for us. We're very excited about the application process. But again, it is a process that we have to go through. We're not guaranteed that we'll get accepted, but we're very, very hopeful.
Then there's quite a few school districts in the state that are actually that way. Or did they do the same thing that we're fixing to go through as part of his applications?
Yes. Every school in Arkansas has the same process.
Okay. Because I knew something popped up a couple of weeks ago, and I think it was on the news or something, and they were talking about it. And there's quite a few throughout the state that are that way. Anybody reached out to any of them to see?
I have not. I haven't reached out to anybody yet. Yeah. And I do have a little bit of fear, just if I'm being real honest, that with this increase, the state may pull back a little bit on that. I don't know what their funding looks like, you know?
As far as like percentage of funding or?
Just with accepting CEP. That's my fear. I don't know that that's even something that's being discussed, but I just have that little inkling, you know, in the back of my mind. So we just wanted to be like very clear that we are intending to apply if you guys are good with that, you know, when we are able to vote and everything. But that we do have to wait for sure to hear from the state before we know. And of course, we will yell it from the mountaintops when we get that letter that says, you know, we've been approved.
Yes. There's a special media blitz that has to happen once you guys have approved it, the state's approved it, that concerns the entire community. So it's like a special about it.
Okay. All right. Any questions? It's great news. Some housekeeping and work to do to get everything in place. We'll have it ready for the May board meeting and have everything ready to meet, I believe, the June 30th deadline for everything to be submitted. Okay. All right. All right. Thank you, too. Good news. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. All of you.
Under the superintendent's reports, just a couple of things we'll knock off real quick. Baseball and softball update. The baseball building is moving along. I don't know if you've been out there, but a lot of dirt moved and a lot of things, a lot of things happening out there, a lot of rock down. And we are anxious to see some structure start up. We're excited about that. We have, you know, we did have a meeting in regards to the coed baseball at St. Paul last month. And there has been, you know, as we've said earlier, there's some support for that. And Bruce had a meeting. We're still working through that. We have, we were grateful to see that the fences didn't wash out at St. Paul in the last rain. I heard horror stories about that outfield fence, but it survived this one. So it will need some work. We talked about that when Bailey did his presentation on all the fencing and different safety measures that we were going to do. But we're still working through some of that. But all in all, I've got a lot more to say on the baseball and softball building whenever we get down to the construction part of it. But that's kind of where we are on that. Just following kind of where we've been on this other stuff. I'm going to jump around for a second. The land sale on Highway 23, we do have a survey. So we are now waiting for it to go to Waco title. And we do think that we are moving forward on it. The school-based health clinic, I'm excited to have Kelly and Cassandra here with us tonight. Though they put out a flyer, Matt, you've typically given us our update. Do you have anything to say about that before we turn it over to?
I'm not going to steal their thunder. I'm going to let them talk about it.
Well, we'll turn it over to you.
All right. And first of all, I want to say thank you for this opportunity that I have had to do this. I'm so excited about it. It's a great thing for our school and the community, but for sure our students and staff. And just to kind of tell you what we've done, we actually had our open house on March 18th. And then we opened March 19th. That was our first day. So we're going on three weeks now. One of those weeks was spring break, so students weren't there. But so far, we've got, right now, 70 kids enrolled. Last week, we had 59, and this is just Tuesday. So that's huge. I'm so excited about that. And so when we have been open, I just wanted to tell you, I've got a few good stories. We had one little kid that came in. He had worm in his ear. That was like second day. It wasn't really. It was fluid. A couple of days, I know, right? Yeah, no, he was serious. He was holding. He had worm in his ear. He told him that. So and then two, three days later, we had a kid wake up, came to school. She had spider poop in his eye. Well, it's pink eye. So we're really glad it's all coming to. And then we had a kid, a kid fell. We had to do stitches. And so within one hour, so it was probably just a little bit over an hour, he was in and out. I'm texting Whitney. It's the title bag. I'm texting her. I'm like, we have our first stitches. Yay. And she was like, yeah, I'm sorry for the kid. Yeah, that's really what I meant. Anyway, it's just really, really going good. I would say every day that we have been in session, we've had at least two to three kids come in that was not on the schedule. And then we've had probably four or five teachers that helped them, you know, not have to leave work. They call and they've got this going on. We're like, yeah, get right on over here. We got them in. It was awesome. So anyway, that's kind of our little, in three weeks, what we've done. And again, I'm just so excited to be doing this. It's a good season in my life. I'm excited.
Yeah. I've tried it out with my own child and enjoyed being able to do that. And of course, my wife enjoyed being able to take her right there. So it was nice to have that option.
I've used it too. Used to say it. So.
And thank you, guys, for the opportunity to partner with the schools for this clinic of Boston Baptist. Very happy to have that support from you all. And we just need continued support from the community. And we're just trying to get the word of mouth out throughout the community and kind of attend some different events throughout the community as well. So thank you, thank you, thank you for allowing us to partner with you all. We appreciate it for sure.
Yeah. And I would say that goes both ways. We're very thankful for the partnership with Boston Baptist and everything that you all have done to get this off the ground and get it going. I'm very thankful for that.
Thank you so much. We appreciate y'all. Thank you so much.
And you put a flyer out?
Yes, that's, we're professional.
Yes, you are.
I've kind of passed a few out. Anyway, hopefully y'all can share that. And we are going to go to the different schools. You know, we've primarily been Watson Primary and Intermediate, but we're going to go to other schools to take them, some of this information. And I'd say that's all, the only thing I want to add is that that's our biggest hurdle right now is getting word out. People really understanding what we can do. And so coming at high school or wherever, if you want to put that word out, that'd be awesome.
And we have, our ESL translators will be next week doing the translating for our families to help get them enrolled, just to remove that language barrier. Ms. Cozad and Monica Barker are going to be stationed at Watson Primary, I think, next week, serving pizza and just helping families fill those out.
Yeah. And I think the biggest thing that's a misunderstanding is that you don't have to change your PCP to be seen in the clinic. You know, that's something that some of our families have misunderstood. And, you know, we're just trying to give them another option, another place to send their kids. And kids don't get counted absent. You know, Kelly can go grab them out of class and bring them over to the clinic. And it's a great option to get them seen quick.
Is PCP?
So they can be thinking of it as like a walk-in clinic.
Yes.
So rather than.
For sure.
True. True. We're excited about, and like as we hit this kindergarten enrollment, families will have the opportunity to get immunizations and physicals done very quickly. So that's going to be such a huge thing for our families as well.
Well, I heard you say you're going to do the athletic physicals as well.
We will have to have kids, like, you got to stay home because you didn't get your shots because of parenting. Get them in.
Oh, so good. Yeah.
Well, we're grateful for the partnership we have. We look forward to what it means to go down the road and certainly going to be a great thing for families and for students.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Just a quick rundown. We did get the money in Dover and the CDs. As you all voted in last month, everything's good there. Our CDs are now sitting in CS Bank. I have a, for a second about the high school East Lab. Mike decided to make a change in that. Would you share a little with us on that?
You bet. Some people don't think about this when they think about programs and how great they are. East is a great program. We have an Agri program that's outstanding. We have the CTE building with three different offerings there. We have a program, it's really a new program where we are starting to go to the video component of the drama classes, video of basketball games. You've seen them out there. And that's a growing, developing program. It's going to be very good. We could probably sit here and name two, three, four other programs that are good and thriving in our school. So when we talk about the East program, there are a lot of good things about East. But my thinking is the East program, for right now, tends to maybe draw kids away from those other programs. They compete against those to some degree. So that's one thing that's on my mind. The other thing is, when we have these programs, when Huntsville High School has something to present out in the world, we want it to be excellent. We want all our programs to be excellent. And if it's less than excellent, if it's mediocre or worse, then we need to ask ourselves why we're doing it. So East is not where we want it to be right now. I think it could be one day, but I think it's also healthy. If it's not where we want it to be, let's pause it for a year. And if we decide that we have room for it and it's what we want to do, we can pick it up a year from now, no consequence. So that's what we're going to do is just pause it for a year and try to make sure that we have everything lined up the way we want it and it's in the best interest of our students. So that's kind of where we are in East. Not their own East program. Matter of fact, middle school East program is outstanding. And so that's something, you know, maybe you got to look, we can build on. We're just not there right now. Okay. All right. So
that is a decision that we've kind of come to. We, I couldn't agree with Mike more, the fact that if we have something we need to be good at, do it well. And this gives us an opportunity to take some time and recalibrate and reset and make a determination about coming back with that possibly in the future. Possibly something different. You know, there's other options out there. But we did want to bring you up to speed to where we are on that. And anybody have any questions on that?
How many kids do we have at the middle school in the East program?
A lot, actually, because we offered it this year to sixth graders, which is something we had never done. And so we have a lot of sixth graders who got to dabble in East this year. And their projects looked very different than those, you know, of our seventh and eighth graders who have had experience in it. I would say at this point, we have probably 20, I would say probably 25-ish students who are in seventh and eighth grade who participate in East. And, you know, probably pretty even split, half and half. And the sixth graders who were able to dabble in it, we don't have those request forms, but those went up with the scheduling for next year. So we will have a better understanding of sort of what our clientele looks like, you know, as students of interest, you know, for this upcoming year as next year's seventh and eighth graders. But I would say we probably have a dozen or so eighth graders who are called in East right now that, you know, that would be moving to high school. It's not an abundance at that level. It really, it potentially need more in a couple of years.
And there's a possibility that most kids come to high school in a few years that
That opportunity.
They could have that opportunity or a different opportunity, depending on what's happening.
Because some of the other programs at my region, you know, do still offer that kind of community commitment and involvement, things like that, too. So in a high school that did, or somewhat East offers, it just looks different.
If we don't continue at the high school, then we need to look at, in my opinion, we need to look at the middle school to have a feeder program of some kind so that instead of East, maybe we have a tag program there or something else that feeds. Because that's kind of, you know, kids come in and they get excited about it, and then that's it.
Yeah.
And I do think that those skills can still build toward any of the other programs we have. Absolutely. There are some things specific to East that if we can get involved in them, they would be healthy first time back. We're just not there right now.
How many years ago has it been when they was in the paper about every week to nationally recognize?
That's when Mr. Shin was still.
How long has it been? Has it been that long?
He retired when I did. Twenty-two was the last. Because he always took them to conferences.
No, they was always in the paper doing something, I mean, nationally recognized. So I mean, is that a failure on the school? Did it fail on them? Was it a failure on an instructor? Where did the failure come in? Because they used to be nationally recognized.
I wouldn't hear it when they were out. I don't know. I don't know what the fact. I just know that this is an opportunity for us to kind of recalibrate, check it, and try to get back to a level like you're talking about.
I think that's the most important part, is you have to have somebody that's super committed to that program. Not, you know, you can't, it's not one thing you just put somebody in there.
So we wanted to bring you up to speed on that. That's kind of where we are. Mike, do you have anything to add about the high school as far as academic report or anything?
Are we doing good building reports? Is that what you're asking? Yeah, we have a number of things. I'm going to have, I got a cheat sheet here, but we have a lot of stuff. I wonder why I'm wearing a sticker?
I was, actually, yeah. I was, actually, yeah.
Apparently, there's some teachers who don't believe I would remember to get the senior trip to Branson approved tonight.
Have it written down now. I saw his shirt, we have it written down now. It should be covered tonight, yeah.
Been trying all day to make sure we can cover it, can't miss that. We have this thing called prom coming up Saturday night, probably go to it, that's exciting. We're all excited about that, trying not to hide our excitement. Kids are really excited, we'll have a good time. And also, Quiz Bowl is going to state, Milby's Bad also on Saturday the 12th. I'm excited about them going there. Skills USA, we have their, their competition, that is a state, state conference on Monday, Tuesday, April fourteenth and fifteenth. And we're gonna have a mandatory college meeting on Wednesday the sixteenth. And that will be for any students who plan to take current credit courses next year. We wanna get them and their parents in a room and, and explain what all that means. Inevitably, you come to this time of year and you'll have a senior sitting there who's falling behind in their comp class. They're not gonna be able to graduate if they don't pass that, that college class. So, so we wanna get out in front of this and make sure everybody understands upfront what it means to be in a college class in high school. So, we'll do that Wednesday night, the sixteenth. Seventeenth next day, we have the high school art show, we're looking forward to, be very good. And then Atlas testing happens the next week.
Mr. Nichols, the art, the art should, will that be at the?
Charles, Charles.
Charles Bear.
Thursday, Thursday, all day at the, at CHB.
Atlas testing, that next week, the week of April twenty-second. I know one more thing I left out, see, last day for seniors, May seventh. And people have asked me about graduation, graduation's Friday, May sixteenth, seven o'clock at, at the arena. And so, the thing is, that is a different night, because we, we don't have to worry about going Fayetteville. We get to have our own arena, and we do it on Friday night at seven o'clock. Agri, now, I told you, this is one of our, one of our good programs. The Meets got first place in the state, so congratulations to them. Valley Antsy and, and other, other places in contests, Valley Antsy got first place, Action Day was second, Jay Demettis sixth, and Peyton Fuller seventh. So, a very active, very strong Agri program, so we're very proud of them. Any questions?
Band contest today, choir tomorrow.
Tomorrow, we're giving the actu placeur test, and that is a college entrance exam in place of, like, you know, the ACT, and we're giving that to seventy-five students tomorrow. So, they're taking the actu placeur, see if they can take those college classes next year. But seventy-five kids are interested in this, yeah.
How about the middle school?
Um, you know, lots, lots of the same types of things going on as with the high school. And testing coming at the end of the month for us, it's the last week of April and the first week of May for the middle school. We divide it two days one week, two days the following. Helps us kinda get ahead of some of the makeups, you know, test Tuesday, Wednesday, makeup Thursday, Friday, and then repeat the next week. And trying to keep our attendance up as much as possible, it's so hard this time of year, and it's sort of critical. And, and, and pushing, you try to get that finished and, and get to testing. And then after testing, then that's, that's when we all sort of like, you know, start losing our minds because kids are going twenty directions for field trips. And, you know, our choir will be singing at the Nationals game on the twenty-sixth. Um, we have a fishing derby on the thirteenth. Our career day is May eighth, so lots of things coming up.
More with this fishing derby?
Our outdoor education program has a host of fishing derby each semester for the kids who are involved in the class. And so, they, they get to go for a half a day and, and compete over the lake. They feed them over there and bring them back, and then come get another half of the kids and take them back over and let them dirty too, so it's good time.
Are they still going to Brannons?
As far as I know.
Yeah, I was over myself. Uh, yeah.
One behind their workouts?
Uh, I'd be fine with it, but it's, it's out by.
But I, I've never been out there, but I forgot to talk about all of the names of places.
Especially those. Well, and just a big shout out to you for allowing us to do that.
Yes, yes.
Bruce, thank you all.
Yeah, we had our prom last Saturday, up here, it's at the Bachelory, was it? We love coming up there, it's, it's a perfect venue for our size kids. Everything went great, junior class did a great job of decorating. And, you know, I gotta tell you, I wanna brag, it's good to have SROs at events like that, just for that extra security and, you know, the feel as a principal being there, it just, it just makes you feel a little bit more secure. So, I, I like the fact that we got our SRO program there at, at events like that. And really appreciative of Kobe being there to help us out and those things, so big brag to him. But a good, good event for us, what's going on right now is track and field, that's me. We got a seventh, eighth grade meet tomorrow, so I'll be off of those kids. Our FCCLA kids are at state competition, they left today. Maddie's got them down there, I got one of my girls, I asked her how she thought she was gonna be, and she said, "Well, Coach, I'm gonna knock it out of the park, you know, I'm good at this." I said, "Well, I like the confidence, but that's Kobe too," over there, and she yelled, "Well, this is my thing," so, good for her. This Friday, we're gonna have a PTSO elementary fun run at the school. We run around the big block behind the gym, it's a, this will be our third year of it, and it's a big fundraiser. Our K-three kids are gonna run at nine AM, if you're not busy, come down and watch, they get pledges. My high school kids run with them, high school teachers run with them, Coach Dunlap, not so much. And so, they'll run for, you know, thirty or forty minutes, and then our upper elementary kids will take off and run at ten. You know, last year, we raised around three thousand dollars in one day on this deal, so it helps with our playground equipment and things like that. Just like everybody's gonna tell you, we got Atlas Summit that's coming up. Our three-six is our first one, it's coming up next week. And then, you know, throughout the rest of April and into the first week of May, we'll have K-two and then our seven-ten kids as well. We have what we call an artifact show, our Art and Facts, Family and Consumer Science. They get together, and, and this will be our third year of this, last year it was around the world. The art kids drew art from around different countries, and then the facts kids created food from around different countries. This year, it's a carnival thing. So, they're gonna have carnival art up, and then they'll have carnival food. All your favorite healthy fried foods from the carnival will be there. And that's April the twenty-second, that will be in the new gym. And I don't have a time, but I think that's at six PM, I think that starts at six. If you're not busy on April twenty-second, come down, we have some really talented kids in art. And then, of course, our facts classes do a fantastic job. And then, do what? I asked Ms. Melon if we was gonna have funnel cake, she said she was gonna try to break from that and do something. But I told her we had to have fried corn dog. So, and then, we got graduation on May the ninth, seven PM, in the new gym. So, that's about where we're at, and lots of things going on, adding Tuscan on the May stuff, field trips and Fun Field Day and Bouncy House Day and all that good stuff. But I'll give you more of an update on that, that's May beginning.
Thanks, Bruce. Intermediate?
All right, we had Jenny from the co-op today come to help with science, so she's been working with us all year. So, we always like having her input. And third grade field trip, the Butterfly Palace, the kids are super excited about. That'll be the fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth, we have two classes going, then two, and then three. Parent night, April fifteenth, and then our Atlas testing starts the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, thirtieth, and May first. And then we will get into all the fun field trippy, bounce house stuff in May too.
Well, I wish Harry was here so I could request a field trip to St. Paul on the twenty-second, but it's not, so. And so, we're rolling in a five-day weekend, none of us know how to manage being here all week. But it worked out well that our poor little kindergarten in first grade's got rained out of theirs last week. So, everybody's going somewhere this week, the rain was getting rescheduled this week. So, second grade today, half of them went to War Eagle Caverns, the other half will go tomorrow. So, I think Whitney will probably be headed there. And, and maybe Josh, you going, it's close to home.
It is, but I already told Brian I was taking him fishing.
Gotcha, yeah, it's, it's hard. Yeah, hey, you can hit up the amazing McMally if you need to. And kindergarten in first, we'll hit the amazing at the end of this week. And so, we're just thankful for Harry to work with us and getting those dates, because first grade was cursed last year. We never gonna get a filter about it then, because the rain never.
Every single.
Every single time. And then for us, we do a whole lot of small group testing when it comes to Atlas, this is brand new to our babies. And so, we actually start our testing next week. And our kindergartners will start on Wednesday and Thursday, and we'll just roll through that May first, and then we'll hit the makeups. So, the other big thing this time of year is we'll have our kindergarten and pre-K enrollment start up, not next week, but the week after, so we'll be seeing some families up for that. And then, of course, we'll hit May pretty soon, and we'll fill you in on all that much stuff later.
Natasha, anything else to add?
I've, I've said my piece.
All right, Tanya?
Mine, we had two very, very good interviews for special education teachers yesterday, and that is a big deal in my world. So, hopefully those will pan out because they both were very good. On the twenty-fourth, we will be having like an open house, really not open house, like an info meeting here in the afternoon for private school, homeschool parents, just to let them know of any opportunities that we offer for the special ed community. Like, we can offer any speech or any kind of therapies to those students that are homebound or homeschool or private school, and just services that they are, have a right to get as parents to those students. So, it's just kind of an information meeting, but that's happening on the twenty-fourth. Other than that, we're testing, conferencing, just moving along.
Yes, sir.
Got to add.
You should have got another.
On April thirtieth, our transitions class is gonna have a community meeting, community businesses, to talk to them about allowing our transitions students to work in their businesses. And do you have more to share about that?
It's really, it's a gathering, and like, I, I think, like, the mayor's coming, Chamber of Commerce people, different owners of businesses, that we show, showcase our students and their abilities to be able to come work. And I've kinda talked about this before, but let's say you have a, a parts store or something. These students are trained, they're food safety trained, and all kinds of different trains, and they can come work for you. And it's paid through a grant, and it's more than minimum wage of what it used to be. And they're getting that work experience out in the community and showcasing their abilities and different things. And then you get free labor, they get paid, it's a win-win. And so, we're just kinda having a meeting to showcase that and try to get some involvement, get our community support. The State Department has a whole transition department, and they're, they're behind it lots of. I don't know if y'all remember Derek Carson, does anybody remember him? He is our supervisor for their, our rep person for transitions. So, Ms. Goodman's doing a great job with that program. Thank you, I forgot all about that, that's on the thirtieth.
I have a question, Tanya, in this crazy era of the MARS Act. So, we don't have a private school here, but they could be, and they could go somewhere else. We did the first assembly, right? Okay, so.
Well, it's not, okay, go ahead.
I won't get into that, yeah, but it's not, okay. But let's say there's a private school, and so, private schools do not have to offer services.
Right.
So, they take their money, you know, and go to this private school with their voucher. Then do we still have to supply through our funds if they want to also have special services?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, now, they are recognizing homeschool as a school. So, if you homeschool your child, you're basically a school for your child. And so, homeschool parents also can bring. Now, we get, there's, we have to identify how many, and it's very hard in this county to figure out how many we really do have. But we let them know, and so, every year I do my budget, I have to set aside a certain amount in case we do have that situation, and sometimes we do. But you can't spend it on anything else, so. And then, the meeting is really to kind of explain that, doesn't mean we, it's how we can spend this much money and how we will decide how to do that, but to provide for those students.
Okay, thank you, Tanya.
Sounds awful, just to be honest. That's a bigger burden on us, and then. Yeah, without the actual funding for the individual kids.
And they'll still get fed, well, maybe for a while, we'll see. But they have that, but you don't have the other regular.
David?
Just quickly, tonight, we've got baseball, softball, soccer, track, all competing right now, all over the place, and staying busy, probably a little bit over halfway through all of their seasons and wrapping up towards the beginning of May when we start hitting district tournaments and regionals and things like that. Coach Dunlap and I, we had good interviews today for the, the girls' basketball job in, in St. Paul, and we're excited about that, and think we're, think we're in a, in a really good direction there, so I'm happy for that. Also, just quickly, want to announce the nineteenth of this month, it will be our cheer competition, our cheers, tryouts, sideline cheer team for varsity, and then the competition cheer team for varsity will be having tryouts on the nineteenth, our junior high will be trying out more in May. So, we'll have more details about that, but getting the varsity cheer teams lined out and ready to go. So, that's where we are right now.
All right, thanks. Jill, you have anything else to add? You're gonna end all with good news, huh? Hey, you got a good deal. Blaine?
Well, we're in the transition period with our custodial services. We're still working out some bugs, they're working out their flow pass, things are looking pretty good with them right now. It's been really nice that we've gotten full staff back on our other campuses for the first time this year. So, so we're playing catch-up with that. One of the other things that we've done this month was we transitioned to a new company with our trash service. Been really good to work with, we're still having some problems with cars picking up our dumpsters. So, if you see two different dumpsters out there, that's why, you know, they're plump full. So, he's supposed to be back this week with me about figuring out a plan to get them out. Other than that, we're working on summer projects. I've got a big list of stuff that we're trying to work with, I'm gonna start getting around to all the campuses and talking with, with the principals and trying to figure out priorities. I think we've got a bigger list than what we can handle, but we're, we've kinda got plans. It's first day of school out, we're gonna hit the ground running. So, that's really all I've got.
Thank you.
Just wrapping up a bunch of, we got a bunch of different grants out there right now for security improvements. What we talked about with Arkansas's safety grant, defense and projects actually come out about thirty thousand, forty thousand less than, you know, so we're, so needless to say, we are gonna be within budget, and, and we're actually hoping to look at adding some other things that we weren't gonna be able to cover with that. So, all that has to be done by June thirtieth, so we're in a, we're in time crunch to try to get all that done. But, so that's just that and the cops grant, and just a bunch of other stuff that we're working through, that's, that's just kind of what I'm focused on right now.
I'm not really gonna add much, but I will say we're still waiting on school report cards, hopefully the middle of this month. We'll see something. I, I was told a while back, April twelfth was the date that they had to have them out by, so hopefully we'll see something pretty soon.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is it that they'll go to Mr. Law first, and he has the option to take the new report card grade or keep your old one, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, that is correct. Yeah.
Oh, so, 'cause, 'cause we're made in transition, so I'm calling it a whole harvest year, keep our old one. But if it's better. And does it, can it go with each school, or, okay.
I'm just not sure how we're supposed to know that what we've been to improve is working if it's the end of the year after, like, it, the process makes zero sense.
Well, that's why they progress monitor all the time, I mean, they're always watching our kids for growth. So, you know, this test is, is one, one piece of. So, you know, this test is, is one, one piece of everything that we do. Obviously, it's the one piece that we're judged on, but it is one piece of what we do. They, they do so much more than that one test, so.
And the end result on the test is important for growth that takes place even is equal as a.
Yeah.
So it'll be, it's interesting to see, we look forward to getting it, we expect it to be good.
Yeah.
We'll see what we got.
And I'll just say, we've all been watching the legislative session pretty close this year, just to see what's happening. I think Mr. Gregory took some kids down there and.
Yep.
Got to spend the day down there and talk with Mr. Eaton and all that, so that's.
Had a lot of good support from our local people.
Absolutely. You know, and big shout out to Purier, you know, everything that he's doing down there to advocate for schools and so, glad to have him.
Absolutely.
That's part of our.
Good luck, I appreciate you, David.
Also wanted to give a little shout out to Mr. Robinett and the welding class. We wanted to have the railing up for the school-based health clinic before they opened, obviously, but, but it's been worth the wait because got to see those kids out there working on that and welding up some railings for them out there. Just very thankful that we're able to do that in-house and give those kids that experience as well, so.
They're taking it very seriously when I was there.
They are.
They had their measuring tapes and they were all making sure everything was locked out.
Yep, they're doing a good job. That's all I had.
Alright, okay. I have, I have about four things to work through. The first one is under item A, which is the resolution on the school board election. It's very typical that when you have uncontested races, there's no point in opening and paying to open polling places. So this will, this will, have the courthouse as the polling place, we have two uncontested races. It'll just take each one of those two people to go in, vote for themselves, and that will sow the election. So no reason to pay for polling, pay for polling places on that. I'm sure you've done this many times before when you've had uncontested races, so this is very common to answer any questions you have on it. If you don't, I would recommend then that we approve that resolution to only open the courthouse as the polling place. I'm gonna give a motion.
Please, then Josh, on favor?
Thank, thank you. Under B, you have a, kind of an agreement, you know, we, we've had a discussion on the, on the baseball softball building. It has a area over the top of the coaches' offices and the locker room. If we use that space, then we go above the requirement or the, the square footage that requires then a sprinkler system. We don't want to put a sprinkler system in. It is terribly expensive, that is a metal and block building. And so we, we feel good about the building. So, but with that being a flat area, I think there is maybe some concern that in the future things could be stored there, things could be put there and.
When there's not any access to it, it's like.
There will be some access to it, because there will be mechanical panels on the wall, but, but it, it won't be easy access. And, and. So this is basically just kind of an assurance between us and, and Kevin with the fire department to make sure that you all understand, I've talked to David about it today, he talked to the coaches about it. But, but this resolution will, will say that we will not store anything up there. We will not, we will not use it for anything other than its required purpose, which is to access that mechanical panel. So I would recommend that we approve that resolution, we sign it and we get it back so it doesn't hold up the construction process.
What kind of mechanical panel?
What kind of mechanical panel is up there? I guess it's power.
There, there's an electrical panel up there and then there's a little bit of mechanical equipment, so the AC units that are gonna be servicing the locker and the coaches' offices, there's access to them. We built a platform that goes along the whole west side, so you can walk down it. And that'll allow you to service the exhaust fans that go out of that building and service some mechanical equipment from inside. There's a door that, there's a closet up there that has the electrical panels and some other electrical gear up there. And that can only be accessed through the door by a man ladder. So that way it removes the temptation of storing.
All of our network equipment and access control will be.
So this is mechanical?
Yeah.
Will there just be a set of stairs or?
You'll have to use, you'll have to bring in a ladder.
Bring in a ladder, okay. That way. They aren't gonna be up there hiding or something. You didn't say well.
Is that not a safety concern there?
Uh, not for mechanicals on that side.
It's not about electrical.
Same deal. I think we moved a panel down low too to, to alleviate that, since you can't directly access it.
Well, I would recommend that we approve the resolution. We have your school calendar, we're, we're going to hire tonight, we're going to get started on getting contracts out. To do that, we need a school calendar. The school calendar has been looked at, Matt, you wanna talk about quickly the process for the school calendar?
Yeah, so we made up three drafts for school calendar, all of them four-day calendars. We sent those to PPC. PPC had a chance to come over them and they actually voted on three different options and this was the option that they, they came back with. One big change for us, this year we had seven PD days built into our calendar this, and this next year we're looking at going back to having the 10 days, which is what we had previously. We just figured out that we need some days built in throughout the year that we didn't have this year and, and so we're going back to that. That's probably the biggest change from this year to next year.
The day on the 8th, is that like a, a day they can come in and they do get, they don't get paid regular, but they get paid if they.
It's contracted day, they come in, they work in the classrooms.
It is a contracted day, okay. That's our open house, probably.
Yeah, yeah, most likely it'll be open house day as well.
No further questions about the calendar, then I would recommend that we approve the calendar.
Hold on a minute. Just in case it gets blowed out of here, like if they decide to make us go back to five days. If it does, it can end up a year down the road.
Okay, I was saying, do we need to have a, a second, well, okay, I'm good.
Can I get a motion? Steve, on favor?
Okay. I've been listening to it, that's good.
Now, now I say Steve, that's what it says, you know, that's still in negotiation, they could, and if it did, then we would just come back.
Okay, I didn't know if we needed to look at one just, just in case or what, that's my question.
It would be, it would be pretty similar to what you have in front of you, but just Mondays and we would adjust the time during the day.
Okay, I didn't know how complicated the election's gonna be, cause I mean, there's a lot of stuff goes into this average Joe going well.
Right, yeah, yeah. I mean, it wouldn't be too bad.
Okay.
Okay, item D is discussable, discussion impossible approval for changes in the baseball softball construction. So. Basically, we have, we have $3 million that has been donated to us to build this building. We are at 2.9 million and a little bit of change. We have, since we are not putting a sprinkler system in the building, we also have a $39,000 deduction we are going to be able to take from, from that, which still leaves us a little over 2.9 million, about 2.9 and a half million of the 3 million that we have spent. In the process of discussing what could go out there, and you've all, we've seen the master plan a couple of times, we had the mayor in, we talked about the master plan and all that. We have, and Philip from Hyatt Jackson, Tysom from Kenco, outstanding worker. They, we, we are trying to get the most bang for the buck that we possibly can. We have a retention pond out there, I don't know if you've been out there and looked, but we have a small retention pond that basically, I think I'm correct in saying, it basically drains the parking lot. And when it was put in, it was just stuck there, drains the parking lot, catches it, and, and it served its purpose, no problem. The problem is where it sits ties up space that could be used. We would, we are, would like to move that retention pond. We would like to take that retention pond from its current location and move it down closer to the creek. It would increase the size of the retention pond, because the new retention pond we put in would be large enough, substantial enough to serve the entire property, whether you build a football stadium or a high school or, I, I guess within reason, anything you would want to do with that property. Nothing comes free. You know, it is a substantial project because it has to be moved. A lot of that is done with underground pipe, so a lot of that water is caught and trapped and taken to that pond. That pond has a concrete box that I guess is like a spillway that, that is a substantial item to have to purchase. If that pond is moved, then on what we have current, what you and we have currently agreed to, we are a small number, 20 feet roughly, somewhere around that, from being able to finish the dirt work to put the softball field in. Now, when I say that, I don't mean the, the fences and the, all that, I just mean the dirt work. While we have the bulldozers and all the heavy equipment that's out there, to get that in, it's probably best to eat this rabbit in a couple of small bites. To get the softball dirt in place, it's going to take an additional $77,742. When you take what we're under the 3 million and you add the, the $39,000 deduct, most of that goes away. To move the pond, which has to be done, will require 376,951 additional dollars, of which there is no, there is no money left over from the foundation to apply.
It would just come out of construction?
That would come out of construction or depending on how we finish the year out operating. We do have, we do have plenty of money in construction to cover that. You know, I don't like touching that if we not, because that is future money that would tie into the high school. But really, the construction of the high school can't take place without the movement of this pond, because the current pond will not, will not suffice. So basically, what we would be getting with that amount of proposal with B, a building, a, the dirt work on the softball field, a small amount of dirt work on the baseball field because of where it sits, and the movement of the pond and this permanent setup of the pond for future construction. We would be getting all that for around 376,000 and we would be getting a $3 million building and a practice field and the movement of the pond. So all in all, it seems to me to still be a great deal for the district. And I'm gonna go ahead and move on because I'm on a roll, but we'll come back and do this individually. The expansion, the way the dirt work works, the expansion of the baseball field will require more dirt work because of the way the land sits. And down the right field line, it's not too bad, we can get out there ways. But as you hit center field and turn towards left field, it begins to shorten up. And on the baseball field, right now, we can't get much behind third base, is that correct? We are still a substantial ways away. We looked at a number to finish the baseball field also, and that number was over $600,000, which to me is, is, is very high. We have asked Kenco to go back and, and Hyatt Jackson to go back and meet with the engineers. And we do believe that the dropping of that baseball field by four feet will allow us enough dirt and enough drop to bring that outfield on out. And what is really expensive is the retaining wall that has to go in the outfield. Of, of the 600 and something thousand, the retaining wall is a big chunk of it, is that a fair statement on my part? You guys jump in here wherever I mess it up, cause I wanna make sure. Okay, alright, alright. But we do think that by dropping that four feet, but we don't know yet. So we have taken that back to the engineers and they are sharpening their pencil and they are, they are working on that. Again, it will never be cheaper to do than it is right now where we've got all the equipment and everything in place.
And they're already mobilized.
But we're mobilized and ready, that's right. But it's still gotta be a number that we can all live with. So what I believe that I'm asking you for is the approval to do the $376,000 on the pond and move it down and get it set and get it set for everything you want to do there in the future. And the $77,000 for the softball field, because we, we pretty much got that. And then we just want your blessing to just continue discussions on, on the baseball and see if we can get that to a number that we can all feel comfortable with and move on. Questions or thoughts on that? Help me clean that up, Philip or Tysom, you did, what, what would you add to that or say to that?
Well, on the baseball field right now, what we're looking at is two feet drop, cause that'll help alleviate any buildup.
So we don't think we can go to four feet?
Not without trying to add extra walls to the west with the drop there, but we're also shifting west like we had early on. And that's gonna help alleviate that additional two feet, because the further west we go, the less we get into that hill going to east. So we're shifting a little bit of that. There's some concern with, with parking for the future high school, but I think as we get into.
That's a good point. That's a good point.
As we get into details of that, we can work through that easier in the road than it is to have a big bill now and reduce that bill by moving.
And one of the things I didn't, I failed to say was, one of the things we've looked at too is shifting that field back towards the west a little bit. And that's where we could have the potential to lose some parking spaces up by where the high school would be. But at, at this point, it's kind of hard to stop the whole project for a limited number of parking spaces when we do have possibilities to put some parking places, maybe in some other places. So I, I don't, I, I hope we're not necessarily eliminating parking places, I just hope that, and they might not be as convenient, to be honest, you know? But, uh, uh, you know, on the other hand, moving those parking places back around and possibly a little closer to the arena would be actually beneficial for things like graduation and things where people are going to the gra, going to the arena. And with the parking spaces we would be eliminating would be the furthest, somewhat the furthest to the north of any of them. So, you know, that, that could kind of be a wash. I'm, I'm prepared to make a recommendation that we proceed on with movement of the pond and with, with the. and with, with the, with the additional monies to level out that softball field. And then we would continue any discussions as we move further about what we can do with the baseball field or not.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
So the fund gave us, the foundation gave us the $3 million.
Yes, ma'am.
And that was for, to make the baseball building. And then they, now you said that there's this little, is it okay with them that we use it?
Oh, they, they, they are, they are, I've talked to Shelby again today. They are very excited about, hopefully, we, we will have a baseball and softball. You know, they, they, they could not have been better to work with. I, I really enjoyed working with them. I really think when you, you know, you say, well, this is, you know, $376,000, that's a lot. Well, it is a lot of money, but we're getting a lot for $376,000. We are getting a gigantic building that is, that really is going to help us, David, in the, I mean, I know we've already had problems this spring with the practice facilities and, 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 you know, when the weather gets bad and it's hard for baseball and softball to get outside and then you have the sports we currently have that have limited indoor facilities.
I know there was one day we had three different teams in the same weight room trying to work out and lift weights all at the same time. And every other facility was full of a current team that was practicing. And it was just, that was the best we worked it out. And I was proud of our coaches for being flexible, you know? Because they, they had to be, but I mean, it was, it could have been a pain and it wasn't. But that would alleviate so much of that with that building, so.
It's never gonna be cheaper than it is right now. It's plain simple.
It's true.
The process ain't going down. They're already mobilized. It would cost crap to remobilize them later on down the road to try to do that, to accomplish the exact same thing that we're trying to help try to do. I mean, at the end of the day, it's gotta be done, so I'd make a motion.
I'm gonna recommend then that we approve change order 1A, which is the softball field dirt work, and 1BB, which is the movement of the pond. That would be my recommendation.
What do you make of that?
Second my neck, all in favor?
Okay, alright, thank you. We will, we will find out more information on the baseball field and we will, we will get back.
So let me get this straight. On the baseball field, we're looking at a retaining wall off the backside of basically outfield.
What they originally had drawn was like a 25-foot tall retaining wall, which the price for that wall is like $340,000.
Crazy expensive.
On the backside, so again, we're looking at lowering that, shifting it back so we don't have the nearest taller wall back there. But that's just not financially responsible along either. I like, it's pretty expensive.
The baseball field is not the dirt work, it's the wall that's killing us. And so anything we can do to move that field and block that field will help us with that wall.
And it, I guess drainage and all that, it's not gonna affect anything going down to that lower field.
All that's engineered, that's the movement of the pond and everything, and there should not be any.
No, we're good on all of that stuff.
Can't guarantee that like the rain we had over the weekend wouldn't kill the bench.
We really appreciate that you guys come and we can ask questions. I know these aren't exciting meetings, so.
Alright, that's everything I have. Well, I tell you what, why don't we go ahead and knock this out? We have a request for a senior trip on, at which time?
April 18th to Branson.
April 18th to Branson? Any questions on that? I would recommend that we approve that trip.
I make a motion.
Alright, all in favor?
Alright.
Congratulations for not forgetting.
I did have down here that we'd had an AGRAT winner, but I think that you addressed that during yours, okay? I will, I will add that yesterday, Mr. Cockton had been meeting with some of the PPC groups and they, they presented some information to us. I, I haven't had really a good chance to look at it, to be honest with you. Been trying to get ready for board meeting and getting, getting this construction stuff ready for you all. But we are, we will look at it. And, and I didn't see, Matt and I did spend maybe 20 minutes today kinda just putting eyeballs on it, talking about it, and, you know, seemed like good information, you know? We'll look at it, we will, I appreciate the work they put into it. And, and we will, we will certainly, certainly put our eyes on that, put more thoughts into that as we move towards our May board meeting.
Yep, and that was a class pass.
That's everything I had there except for personnel. And I know, discuss our personnel and some movements that we have. Thought we might go into executive session for just a few minutes and see what personnel questions you have on that that we can't answer and overturn. We'll come back.
We're gonna exit pause. Personnel.
Back in regular session.
All right, I appreciate the discussion. I presented the two sheets, personnel to you all. I would recommend that we approve the license and the classified sheets as presented.
Can I get a motion? First, second, all in favor?
All right, and then we have two additional items in personnel. I would like to recommend that we make a change in our salary schedule. We list a position as pre-K director. We add $5,000 to Kerry Davidson's existing stipend. And we change that stipend to $12,000 and list Kerry Davidson as our pre-K director. That would be my recommendation.
Can I get a motion? All right, all in favor?
I would recommend that we make a change and add to Ms. Wrinkle's contract, building admin assistant, which will be about a $3,000 addition to her salary. And we will make her the secretary or the building admin assistant for the CTU building. That would be my recommendation.
Second motion, all in favor?
Okay. All right, that is, that is all the personnel that we have. Matt, we got everything?
Do we need to do the hires and resignations separate or is that...
Well, they're on the sheet as a hire.
Okay.
Well, they are, aren't they?
And then we have the resignations.
Okay, all right, and I would recommend that we approve the hires and resignations as presented on that second sheet.
All in favor?
Okay, all right. That is everything unless we forgot something. Okay, Matt, we got everything taken care of? Would you take senior trip?
The daughter that'll be having.
All right, I can get a motion.
I'd like to say thank you to Jolynn Nelson and Vicki Dotson and Leisha Johnson for coming back out of retirement and helping us out when we really needed some help.
And Jennifer Dotson.
Oh yeah, and that we had people with experience and that were, you know, that's not as easy to get math teachers in the middle of a school year, so.
Thank Michael Johnson for his time, sir.
Oh, definitely.
Mary Ann.
And we're so sad, yeah.
And Coach Foster, congratulations on retirement. And Ms. Stevenson, congratulations on retirement as well.
All right.
Brian, going back.
We don't want you either.
What's the harm?
Literally, right?
Literally.
All right, that's all.
But you just got one more meeting, didn't you?
No, he's got two.
I got two more.
Unless you fire me today, I got two more.
That's good, I might think of something else.
Don't make motion, future.
All right, turn our second call there.